Clerk, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling? Benson? Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford? Wallace?
All right, we have court, so we'll go ahead and move on to item four, discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 16, 2018. Item B is approval of claims in the amount of $131,045.31 and payroll expenses of $344,290.74. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Item six, reports from boards and officers. A is the Alva Library Board Meeting on January 16, 2018, and February 20, 2018. Mr. Eckhart?
Okay, due to the shift in meetings on Tuesdays, I had Library Board the days before, so that's why we have to. So we'll start with January 16. We talked about the city looking at, or, sorry, one of the big things that they talked about at the meeting was the inventory. They're almost done inventorying the entire library. They have the youth area left inventory. It's the last area that they're completely going through in inventory. They did purchase four new backup battery units for the computers, main power computers, et cetera, so power were to go out or things, they're not going to lose all their data, which is important. Looking at four different programs for the summer reading program coming up, they're working on kind of the whole parameters for that somewhat, and they're developing an ebook workshop that will be held in the spring, and then looking at some craft supply swap event. Basically, they wanted, they were talking about maybe bringing in some, having people bring in old yarn or fabric or things like that that they have lying around that people could come in and swap out for other stuff. That was pretty much it for the 16th. We had the meeting today. We talked about regular financials and board minutes. They talked, Director Hamilton talked about the E-Rate funding status, which is the yearly program they have to go through to get internet and computer services. They've got four bids for that. They're looking, they're looking those over. They have a whole process matrix they have to go through to get that bidding. We discussed our library board meeting schedule, and we have discussed changing our library board date to the first Monday versus the last, the third Tuesday. It's actually a good problem because they had so many people there for the youth program this afternoon that they were short-staffed. So they were, they're having, it's Tuesday afternoons too, and it was interfering with, it was taking Director Hamilton away from that, so I think it would be something that, so we talked about switching that. They have a couple of things coming up, the French Taco Fantasy in April, and the Kids Activity Day, and those both seem, those both activities get, gather a lot of community support, community involvement, so. And that was pretty much what we had going, so.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Eckhart? Thank you, Chris. Item B is the Alva Tourism Tax Meeting on January 17, 2018. You can see in your packet the minutes from that meeting. In addition to routine business, it looks as if there was an application for Bull Battle III, which they funded $10,000. And I will draw, it's not part of their meeting as the tourism tax, but one of their subcommittees, the Advertising and Promotions Committee, has been working diligently, and I want to draw all the council members' attention to visit Alva on Facebook, as well as website, Instagram, and all of these other social media outlets, but it is, they have begun referring to different local businesses, and if you see folks that need to be responding to these things, the more likes and shares and that kind of thing that pop up on these Facebook posts, the more reach we have to catch people that are outside of our backyard. And that's, that's our whole goal with tourism, is to bring people over that wouldn't already be here, so. They would appreciate all your help with that.
Kelly, is that the one that they had to pay for?
Yes.
Did they ever come up with a bottom figure that they're paying for, or is it just, do we know yet how much, the whole thing cost?
I don't have that with me. Yes, they know that. Wait, I couldn't find that out. I'll get that.
I can find it after the change of date.
They have not expended all those funds yet. I do know that much, but it was, the amount was approved. I'm happy to try to answer any other questions on the tourism. Joe Don, is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
All right, item C is the Alva Recreation Authority Meeting on January 17, 2018. Mr. Sherman?
Went over the shake structure, construction that's going on, and I think we discussed the, we discussed the top dressing for the April tournaments.
We did, we did discuss that a little bit. We have, we have taken care of that. We've done, we've done all the top dressing that we had planned for this year. We discussed, we looked at our financials, they were not approved because they were not complete, so we'll have those addressed again in February tomorrow. But then we did give an update on the shake structures and where, as far as where we're at as far as completion on those. And that was all of the, that was the extent of the meeting for the recency.
Does council have any questions? Or either Joe Don or Brandon? Thank you. Item D is the Alva Hospital Authority Meeting on January 23 and on February 20, 2018. Dr. Hannaford is unable to join us this evening. You can see the agendas and minutes, though, in your packet. I was present at the January 17, and I tried to answer questions, but council had any. Was not present this evening. Next item is the Arena Authority Meeting on February 6, 2018. Joe Don?
I don't have anything to report on that. I have not seen the minutes.
That meeting was actually canceled. I apologize. It was canceled.
Okay, it was canceled, all right. I can tell you that the TIF Review Committee has been established, and they'll be meeting with the, oh, the Dan Bachelor, I'm not sure what his title is exactly, but we'll be looking at the project information here towards the end of March.
As a financial advisor.
Yeah, financial advisor, okay. As far as moving forward with the recommendation on to establish a tax increment financing district or not, we'll keep you posted on that. Item F is the Alva Airport Commission Meeting on February 12, 2018. In addition to routine business, we did have a presentation of the Airport Commission Manual. Again, that's the city council manual handbook that we have for council members. Airport Commission, we had that presentation. We also had discussion with no action regarding repairs and painting the airport terminal, and Joe Don, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that was about, that was the extent of our, our meeting that night. We didn't have any, well, we did, April Mills did give an update on the annual air race.
So, just so council members are aware, I'll keep reminding you, but come up in June, there'll be a air race from somewhere in Texas to somewhere, I think, in Maine. And Alva is the first stop. Focus out at Plain Plastics, and many other groups in the community are going to be working to put the better part of a week's worth of events together out at the airport surrounding that event. So we'll have, April indicated there'd be, in addition to the race itself, there'd be pilots coming in to give free rides to children, and lots of, you know, classic aircraft on, you know, display out on the grounds, and so it's, plans are shaping up for a multi-day event, and looking forward to having, happy to answer any questions there may be from Item G is the Water, Wastewater Committee Meeting on February 14, 2018. Could that be Mr. Sherman?
Well, yeah.
Randy?
Randy's, he's not here, but either Mr. Sherman or Mr. Winters can chime in, or I'll update the council, doesn't matter.
We discussed getting a one-ton pickup with a dump bed for the water department, because the one that they're using is an old 1980-something repurposed ambulance. So it has been quite the adventure, I guess, on that one. The, we got updated on the construction of the water tanks, and talked a little bit about choosing tank color before they started doing the concrete, and they talked about having to repack that ground up there, digging out the extra four feet, and bringing in some fill and compacting that, because the, I want to say this wrong, geotechnological survey was not quite what they expected. The ground wasn't as compact as they thought it was supposed to be. Discussed a little bit about some projects that we're aiming at getting done over the next couple of years, mainly Skyline Drive Sanitary Lift Station, the water line out to East Alva, replacement of 13,000 linear feet, almost 14,000 linear feet of distribution line that comes in from the well field, getting some retrofit, and some improvements down on the water wells themselves, and then a booster station at the water tank there at the top of the boulevard. And I think that was pretty much it.
Rehab of the chlorine system, the water chlorine system. There's some work there.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Sherman or Mr. Don, for the water?
They mentioned the tank color. That's the tank color of the new tank that will be going up?
Yes.
I did have a concern that was brought to me about that, just, I don't know if this is the place to put it in there or not, but they did mention that the Ranger that was painted on it previously is part of a mural society, and there was some concern that that would mess up the numbering and such if that was not redone or repainted at some point in time.
Okay, that's, obviously, the redo, the renumbering or repainting of that mural, of that tank is, we have not considered that.
Okay, I'm just saying, it was brought to my attention, so.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll keep that in our list of things that we need to get done, but right now, it was just the, we discussed the night, the other night was just the, what we wanted the color of the tank to be, and that's, we did choose white.
But the record show I would veto any, any color that was.
There was a, there was a motion for hot pink, because it is across from the mayor's house, but that motion was quickly turned down.
Not for lack of try.
Yeah. But I will keep that in mind, Councilman Eckhart.
I just wanted to make sure that you knew that.
We'll see what we can get done as far as rehabbing that if need be.
Looking up in that area, I want to comment, it has been very easy for all of us that live up there. They have done an excellent job of going up and down the streets. They don't leave any, I mean, it's just been really, you can't even tell that they're doing anything. It's been very nice, and the ground looks really nice up there. If you've not been by it, you need to walk up and look at it or drive by it, because...
It's a clean construction site.
It is a very clean construction site.
Like the sign too, it's such a good.
Yeah, the sign.
Item H is Personnel Committee Meeting on February 20, 2018. Well, again, Dr. Hannaford is not here. Would Mr. Winters or Mrs. Hamilton or Mr. Don care to report?
We spoke about the CPI increase that's coming up on the employee pay matrix, kind of what that would look like. We received that, that report, and we'll continue to look at that as we go into that. And then we had a pretty considerable, or pretty lengthy discussion on kind of what we could do for, as a employee recognition program. It's been on the list for quite some time, something we wanted to put together, and just had some back and forth discussion on that.
Before, Daniel, we kind of talked about the retreat. We have a planned retreat coming up, and I think it's going to be mentioned later probably, and some of the review of what we had on that retreat, what we've already done in the past, and a couple of changes with employee in different divisions, with employee structure of that facility, of where that is. So as soon as all this comes about, then we can announce more what it is, because nothing's been decided yet.
Questions from the council for, or Joe Don, is there anything to add?
No, no, not right now. There's some of the employee changes that Councilwoman Hamilton mentioned do need to go before the boards that operate those, that operate those, in those areas, help advise those areas.
Item I is Finance Committee Meeting on February 20, 2018. Mr. Sherman, can you give us a report as a? We did not have a court. Item J is City Mayor's Report. I will report to the board or the rest of the council that we did receive a letter of resignation from Councilman Benson. He has been unable to fulfill his position, according to him, to the extent that he would feel is necessary to do the position justice due to other obligations. So we will be looking to fill that position by appointment, as well as the committees that he served on, and I'd be, I'll be getting with each of you to discuss that outside of the meeting, and so we can move forward hopefully expeditiously, and in the best interest of our council and our community. Other than that, it's, basically, I think, most of the work that's been going on, as you got it well known, your committees were gearing up for our budget retreat. It'll be March 3, out of the Career Tech. And I appreciate all the work that committee members, as well as the staff, have been putting into getting us prepared for that very important meeting, so. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have. Item K is City Business Manager's Report. Mr. Don?
Well, I would like to first point out, as you said here, you probably recognize that, or probably realize that there is another young man sitting back here with Angelica Brady, our secretary. This is Brandon Nichols. He's been working with us over the past couple of months as an intern off Northwestern. Been doing a very, a very good job helping get Angelica caught up from maternity leave. And we're awful happy to have her back full-time with us, and getting wrapped up and ready for the budget retreat. I think Brandon, or Brody, I'm sorry, Brody Nichols.
Or Brandon Stenrath, I was saying.
Yeah. Had Brandon on my mind for the last half hour. But he exemplifies the, the work, the student that Northwestern has. I mean, he's been a very, a very diligent young man to have working with us. He is very capable to do it. He told me that when he started this, he was working on an accounting degree, and he was thinking about either governmental accounting or banking. I hope we haven't scared him away too bad from government account, governmental accounting, because it is a very rewarding career, but we are awful, are awful happy to have him here. One of the items that we are working on as far as city staff is concerned, that we haven't reported on very heavily in the past, is we are working on getting a, working on being able to accept debit and credit cards at City Hall. This will be for the payment of anything over, you know, anything from utility bills to permits to police fines to rec. park fees. We ought to be able to take those payments via credit card. It'll be a note, it's really, the, what we are looking at right now is a no-cost option to the city of Alva. There's no upfront, upfront fee or any maintenance fees that go along with this service. The company is paid by the customer with convenience fees. And what the proposed pricing structure, as far as that convenience fee would be, it'd be $2.50 for all bills up to $100, and then 3.5% for all bills over $100. Convenience fees are very, are very commonplace in the industry and in other industries for acceptance of credit cards. Of course, if they didn't want to, if a customer didn't want to do that and wanted to be, have a more automated draft, a more automated method of payment, they would be able to still sign up for direct draft and all those other, all those other ways we collect money. The, once we get finished with our analysis, we will be making a recommendation on how far, how we move forward with this, with this option, but right now, it's looking very We are, we are still working at the Young Street Tank Farm, and I'll probably go a little bit more in depth on that, but as far as in the Utility Authority, but we had our first progress meeting as of, on February 6. The contractor were in construction, when they were out on time, the published timeline. We have been working the geotech and trying to get some compaction issues taken care of, but we'll talk more about that in the, in the Utility Authority. Do want to point out, do want to point out that since January 29, Woods County has been underneath a burn ban, and then Governor Fallon did issue a 40 county, a 40 county burn ban after that. Along with that, there was a fire, there was a fire over the weekend out of Freedom. Our fire crews worked diligently Saturday and Sunday out there, trying to get that fire under control. I do believe Sunday afternoon it was under control. Our crews continued to work out there through, through the day, and I think it's maybe completely extinguished now. Do want to remind everybody about the budget retreat on March 3, at the Career Tech, again. And those would be as far as, those would be our project reports, as far as the finance report is concerned. We are at about 58% through the budget year, and our general fund is collected about, our general fund has collected about 48% of what we were expecting during the, during this process, in this timeframe, at budget, at budget, during the budget process, again. But then, as far as our expenditures are concerned, we're at about 59%, so we're round about on the target where we're at. Our revenues are slightly under where we were this time last year, about $7,000. Some of our general fund revenues haven't come in as expected, is the reason we're a little bit behind. Our Utility Authority, we're at 52% of expected collections compared to 40, 58, and we are, as far as expenditures are concerned, we're at 51% of what was budgeted during budget, during budget. And with that, I would be happy, that's my business report, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council members have any question for Mr. Don? All right. There being done, we will move to item number seven on the agenda, is discussion and action to waive the construction permit and solid waste roll-off service fees as requested by the United Methodist Church relating to the foster house construction at 1741 Noble Street. We have a few guests here that I believe would be able to answer any questions that the council members may have, but I welcome the opportunity, if you all would like, to address us before we take this item under discussion. Or not.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let me introduce our group. We're from the First United Methodist Church. Janice Mountain, the former warden of our work camp. Amber Meyer, works for Northwest Kansas Services. Dr. Kirk Moore, our pastor at the First United Methodist Church. Kirk Worshipman, he's a salesman out of Worship and Mower. We learned about this project about six months ago, and I think what's neat is the Circle of Care, which is a branch of the First United Methodist Church, was looking for a place in Oklahoma to build a foster home. And at our groundbreaking, Don Batston, who is the director of the Circle of Care, someone asked him, "How did you choose Alva, Oklahoma? Why did you choose it as a community in northwest Oklahoma?" He said, "I need to correct you. It was not northwest Oklahoma. We chose this facility to be located in Alva from the whole western part of the state of Oklahoma." And that made us very pleased. They had mentioned this project, Alva was a location, they wanted to build it, they looked at several different communities, and there's going to be other foster homes that are going to be built, but the one that will be probably completed and built first is the one in Alva, Oklahoma. And the reason we like this idea, and our committee who's mainly here today, is because we're going to keep siblings together. When children are taken from a home, their own home, instead of putting two children in Enid, and one in Woodward, and one in Alva, the primary purpose of this particular home will be to keep siblings together. We had our groundbreaking, we've done a good job of raising money, the footing has been run, the cement has been run for the floor, the electric and the plumbing are all in place, and we're ready to put up a foster home. And what else, else we think is exciting, if this one goes well, we're going to build another foster home in Alva, Oklahoma. And Joe Don has helped us on several projects. Your legal counsel is also discussed with us, and we're pleased with the results, and today, we are asking that the fees that, that you normally request be waived in this particular case. And we thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you and ask for this consideration.
Thank you. The fees that we are talking about, just for your knowledge, is that we're looking at total construction permits from plumbing and mechanical, electrical, and building to total $562.70, and then we would be supplying them with a roll-off box, and typically, those are $175 a trip when we pick them up and dump them. So at this point, we don't know how many times we pick up and dump from the... So at this point, we don't know how many times we pick up and dump from the, from the construction site, but that's what we would be looking at. I think this is a very worthwhile project. Think it'll benefit our community in numerous ways and have no, no reason to not recommend this waiver. And this is just a waiver of fees. Circle of Care, First United Methodist Church would still need to get permits and we would still do inspections, but this would just be a waiver of those fees that would normally go along with those.
I recall meeting with the Woods County Coalition on, on one of our monthly meetings and Dr. Cook Moore had expressed some of the plans for this particular endeavor. And I was hopeful that there would be a way that the city would be able to help work with this group to bring about this project. And I'm, I am happy to see the request before the council today. It is something that every once in a while we get the chance to, to do something really uplifting and good, and I think this is one of those opportunities. And I will open it up for council members to ask questions. I believe the request has been fully explained, but if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make the motion.
I'll second.
That we. Let me tell you what I want to do now. To waive the construction permit and solid waste roll-off service fees as requested by the First United Methodist Church relating to the foster house construction at 1741 Noble Street.
No, excited.
I'm excited.
I know.
It's an exciting project.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Sherman to waive the construction permit and solid waste roll-off service fees as requested by, as the church related to the foster house construction at 1741 Noble Street. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Well, thank you all for being here this evening and thank you for what you're doing in our community and best of wishes as you move forward through this process.
And you're welcome to stay.
Item eight is discussion and action to revise the section entitled Recording Your Time of the City of Alva Employee Handbook. As you recall, we had discussions on the handbook at the last council meeting. There were, I had asked for, suggested some changes to this section that weren't able to be included in a, in the summary of revisions that council considered. So we're bringing that back up this month. They're in your packet. You can see the current language versus the proposed language. And essentially the proposed language is to draw attention to this newly acquired electronic timekeeping system that we have and that it'd be the priority for keeping time for the City of Alva. Is there any discussion, further questions on that?
Is it going to be like a computer-based like network where they can clock in and out their individual buildings and places?
Yes, it will be that way. There'll be, there'll be time clocks located at the street department, the transfer station, swimming pool and the rec, no, not at the rec park, at the public works. The rec park, City Hall, police department, fire station, they would all log in via their
All motion to approve the revised section of the City of Alva Employee Handbook entitled Recording Your Time.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve revisions of section, of the section entitled Recording Your Time of the City of Alva Employee Handbook as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item nine is discussion and action to appoint councilperson Mary Hamilton as one of the city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 IAFF local 3782 union contract. With Mr. Benson's resignation from the council, he'll also be resigning as a representative to the firefighters' union contract. Mrs. Hamilton had expressed interest at the previous time that she has, with her background and with the union negotiations and her career and interest in doing so in this case. And so we have, I'm putting forward to you, Mrs. Hamilton, to be our representative for the firefighter union negotiations.
All motion to appoint councilperson Mary Hamilton as one of the city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 IA, IAFF local 3782 union contract.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to appoint councilperson Mary Hamilton as one of the city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for the 2018, 2019 firefighters' union contract. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item 10 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Are any citizens that like to make a public comment? We ask you please approach the podium and state your name and keep your comments to two minutes. One of these days, David, I expect a long speech that we have to cut you off.
I was surprised you said that.
Item 11 be remarks and inquiries by council members. I, I failed to mention during my mayor's report, the OML has, this time of year is very active in our legislative concerns for municipalities all across the state. I believe you all should be receiving the OML legislative updates. Please take time to go through those. There's quite a few issues related to municipalities that they're working on our behalf for. Anytime you see anything in there that, that you have questions about or that you feel like we may need to take some action on, bring that to my attention or Joe Don's attention and we will work with our advocates at OML to, to help make sure our interests are taken care of as the state does what the state does with their policies and legislation.
That is a committee that I do serve on, so if you are not getting that information via email, please let me know and I will make sure you get added to the list server or I'll make sure you get that information.
Kelly, the March 3rd, I must have missed the time, but what time do we meet?
Starts at eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
I'd like to thank, even though he's not here, Bryce, for his long service for the city council. I sat on numerous committees with him and, and the amount of work that he put in and effort that he put in to make sure that everything happened correctly and, and he was always well informed and just, even though he's not here, I'd like to thank him for his service and great standing in the community.
I'll, I'll share with you guys, when he and I spoke earlier this week, I, you know, a lot of us are, all of us have yet to complete a term. And so we have had a lot of youth, if you will, in terms of council leadership and Bryce has been a, a great contributor to the history of what's been going on with the city council for his many terms and that has been a tremendous asset to each of us moving forward. And I echo Brandon's, you know, sentiments with him and he very humbly said, I haven't done anything special. I do love the city and he's, you know, did what he could, the best he could while he was here and that's all we can ask of any of us. So I do appreciate him. I'm sure the rest of us feel the same way.
Will he be here again or do we know if he'll be back to another meeting or?
His resignation was effective this week.
Okay.
Third last week.
And I will say that through his work, through his efforts with the, in work with the City of Alva through the fire, as a volunteer fireman and as a councilman, Councilman Benson had on, had in excess of 20 years' experience with the City of Alva. So he, his knowledge, especially helping me, I mean, he was the, he was one of the last ones on the board that hired me and his insight on what to help get me going in the City of Alva and bring me up to speed on things has been invaluable.
There are no further comments. We will adjourn the Alva City Council meeting and we will open the Alva Utility Authority meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling? Benson? Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford? Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 16, 2018. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $87,612.37 and payroll expenses of $124,412.83. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Eckhart to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to declare surplus and authorize the disposal of a 1984 Chevy C30, VIN number 1GBJC34W3EV120787, which is no longer needed by the City of Alva. Is that the ambulance converted to the water truck?
Yes. It is.
You've served our city well.
Yeah.
1984 Chevy.
Yeah. It was, it was on the street today.
Does it still run?
It was on the street today.
Oh, was it really?
Yep.
It was almost.
Yeah. Because we will be offering for seal bids, it was operational today. But it is a, it does, it does have its maintenance challenges.
So anytime there is equipment that needs to go to pasture, the council must declare it a surplus and, and then we can dispose of it either by sale or otherwise. And so as Joe Don's indicated, this is going to go up for auction and we need to declare it surplus in order to do so. So I would entertain a motion.
All motion to declare surplus and authorize the disposal of a 1984 Chevrolet C30 VIN
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to declare surplus and authorize the disposal of 1984 Chevy C30 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item six is discussion and action to purchase a one-ton pickup with a dump bed for the water wastewater department in an amount not to exceed $48,000. As Mr. Sherman mentioned in his report, this would be the replacement vehicle for the 1984 Chevy. I'll, don't want to steal anybody's thunder, I'm just going to keep going though. They did look at possibility of purchasing used and to get a used vehicle with the options we needed, they were going to have to get more options than we needed, causing the total cost to us to be in excess of the $48,000. This is an amount that is, Joe Don, I believe this is, you stated this was over what we had budgeted?
It is over what we had budgeted. We did budget, we did budget for this purchase at $32,000. The pickup's going to come in a little, the pickup's going to come in a little bit over that, it's going to be about $34,000. But the dump bed will be between $11,000 and $14,000. So we're asking for the all not to exceed the 48.
When this will be brand new?
It'll be a brand new pickup. It will be delivered, we won't expect, we won't get rid of the one we have until we get this one in and we do not expect to get this one in for another 60 to 90 days. It is being purchased off the state bid through a, through a local vendor, Worship and Moving.
So maybe it'll last 34 years too.
It's only about $1,200 a year. I do, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to purchase a one-ton pickup with a dump bed for the water wastewater department in an amount not to exceed $48,000.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Winters to purchase a one-ton pickup with a dump bed for the water wastewater department in an amount not to exceed $48,000. You drove it off on me. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Item seven is discussion and action on change order number one in the amount of $85,775.34 for the Young Street Tank Farm construction project. As was mentioned in the water report and in Joe Don's report, this is because the compaction studies revealed that we needed more compaction on the ground in order to support the one and a half million gallon water tank that's going to go in. This is under what the anticipated engineer's estimates were by about 40 to 50 grand. And it is a change order that project can't move forward without proving this.
And although it does increase the cost of the tank or the construction of the tank, it does not increase the total project cost. We had a little over $200,000 as contingency fees. This, this is part of that contingency.
We entertain questions or a motion if there are no questions.
Motion to approve change order number one in the amount of $85,775.34 for the Young Street Tank Farm construction project.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to approve change order number one in the amount of $85,775.34 for the Young Street Tank Farm construction project. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Thank you. We will close the, adjourn the Alva Utility Authority meeting and open the Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Yes. Or here?
Stelling? Benson? Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford? Wallace?
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ABA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 16, 2018. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $308,062.98 and payroll expenses of $21,070.17. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and we are adjourned.